Is there a motion to approve minutes from the last public business meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We'll move into our action agenda. We don't have any press here this evening, but it still counts as a public meeting. So item one is Resolution 22-17. This is the Rocky Gap slots allocation. Administrator Bennett.
Good evening, Commissioners. As you guys know, we are required by state law to provide a rocky gap slots allocation. We have a local development council that's been formed to do that and is part of all of that. They make a spending recommendation annually. You guys are required to essentially approve that spending recommendation. I serve as chairman of that commission and we had a meeting back in May and we set next year's spending allocation. So if you would, I'll just walk through what changes we've made and what we have in place and then we'll put it to you for approval.
Please.
So as you guys know, we were at 3.75% of rocky gap slots revenue annually to receive. We're lucky, come July 1, that's going to move to 5.5%, which will line up with the rest of the state. So as we looked at our spending allocation, we considered that. Happy to report that what we're going to do, the group recommended, is move the resolution date to June 30, 2023. Make no major changes to the existing items, including the scholarships. As you know, we fund scholarships at Allegheny College and Frostburg State. One new item we have done is add $100,000 to assist Rocky Gap Casino with a transit operation that will function between Rocky Gap and Canal Place. That will be to assist both workers, to help them get folks there for work, and also visitors to get them back and forth from our downtown. After that, any new excess money from the increased percentage is actually going to be held back and used for a future grant program that will be run by the local development council. So at a point in time, we're going to update the group how the revenues look. They will consider a grant program going forward. So with that being said, our new funding estimate's looking to be close to about $3.9 million. That would be the estimate. It will give nonprofits and municipalities, they get 20% of these funds by state law, that would be $792,000. That's in the form of capital grants, which we award annually. Allegheny College, the scholarships will get $360,000 a year. Frostburg State University gets $200,000 a year for scholarships. Those amounts are the same as prior years. Allegheny County PEGO and Board of Education Capital Funds each get $80,000 a year. The Allegheny County Law Enforcement Agencies get $50,000 allocated for either ballistic vests or tasers or any other need they may have throughout the year. Our fire companies will split $865,000. Allegheny County EMS will be capped out at $250,000 to assist in our operation. Rocky Gap Transit will get $100,000, as I mentioned, and then new grants will get approximately 1.1 million. As you guys know, state law reads that this recommendation is from the council. You guys do have to approve it and that you have to make your best effort to approve it. So we're just looking for your approval tonight on this.
Great. Gentlemen, any discussion?
No, sir.
This is, Jason, how much more money is this than last year?
It's going to be an increase of, we think, approximately 1.2 million. So it's still an estimate right now, obviously. We'll know better next year at this time, but yeah, nice increase for us.
That's great and I'd like to thank the delegation for getting that resolved and it's been a long time coming. So we are on par with all the other counties in the state now in terms of local impact funding. So, okay. Is there a motion to approve Resolution 22-17?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great.
Thank you.
Okay. Gentlemen, item two, Invest Allegheny Grant Winners. Mr. Adam Stroud is here from Economic Development. Come on up. And I will say, there was a lot, a lot of good projects and I hope he can give some detail on how we selected some of those.
So first off, I'd like to say thank you to the Commissioners for the opportunity to present the winners of Invest Allegheny. There were over 40 applicants, so we want to thank you and the public for your patience as we spent this period reviewing every application in great detail. The execution of this program represents a very close collaboration through multiple departments of the county, including leadership, as well as the Art Department, Economic Development, and Finance and Department of Public Works. So without further ado, the following projects, in order of how they were scored with the committee, will be awarded funds for Invest Allegheny. And I'll read the projects off as they relate to the applications. So first was the Opatee Perry Building in Frostburg, then the McMullin Building in Cumberland, 107 Polk Street, Cumberland, the Hill Street School Project in Frostburg, 206 North Center Street, Cumberland, 64 North Center Street, Cumberland, 42 to 48 Main Street, Lonaconing, the M&amp;T Bank Building, also known as the Rosenbaum Building, Cumberland, the 4X's Garage Bar in Cumberland, the Gates's Restaurant Building, Cumberland, 134 North Mechanic Street, Cumberland, and JJ's Pizza and Wings in Cumberland. So these winners represent $1,814,271.31 of funding from a total pool of $2 million, which leaves an additional $185,728.69 remaining. So President Shade, respectfully, how would you wish to instruct the committee to proceed with those remaining funds?
Well, I'll give some background. So the group met and, you know, the Commissioners weren't involved in who ended up winning. You know, there were a lot of really good applications. Grant number 13 would have put us over the 2 million.
Correct.
So that's why we stopped at 12. You know, for those remaining funds, I don't know if we want to have a second round or go back to some of the, some of the people that applied that were on the cusp and maybe divide it out. That's something we're going to have to think about.
I think I'd like to see, I mean, I know there were obviously some very good larger projects, but there were other things I think people were really looking for to help their businesses. So I think that if we could take a second look and see some of the people that were particularly close and, you know, and have another look at that, hopefully. Yes.
Sure.
Yeah, let's, let's do that. I mean, there's, there's still funding in there that we've already earmarked and, you know, I will say, thank you for, for your work, Adam. You know, you went through all these applications and were able to meet a criteria and sort them out and, you know, the top 12, like, how many people do we have on there? Four or five? Five people on the, on the committee?
There were five, yes, five committee members from multiple departments throughout the county.
And so they scored each project and every project got an average? And maybe you want to talk a little more about the criteria?
Yes. So we had a scoring matrix that was derived from the program details. There were some items that were essentially yes or no, whether or not they were within the priority zones, whether or not they had more than 50%, 50% or more Allegheny County contractors, and whether or not the applicant was a resident or business owner in Allegheny County. So these were just a simple yes or no. The other remaining six elements were more subjective based on the project itself in regards to placemaking, local placemaking, increasing livability, as well as the impact on multifamily housing and job growth within those communities. So that's how the scoring was broken down between those five members individually.
This is something we can go back and revisit. The funding is through the ARPA funds, 13 million we got. And so, you know, a big chunk of ours, we're putting right back into economic development. You know, this is a one-time program. We've never done anything like this. So the nice thing is, you know, with this $1.8 million that we're giving, it's all has to be matched dollar for dollar by the private sector. So you're really going to see some big investments in, in some of these dilapidated buildings all across the county.
Okay.
Very good. Okay.
Thanks, Adam.
Gentlemen, is there a motion to accept the item as staff recommends?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Moving to our consent agenda. Mr. Bennett.
Good evening, again, Commissioners. Eight items on the consent agenda tonight. Item three is Resolution 22-16 for the Cumberland Area Fiscal Year 22 to 25 Transportation Improvement Program. Us asking, acting as the area metropolitan planning organization. Item four is Labor Management Agreement with the FOP. This is simply an amendment to that labor management agreement as agreed to by the county and the Sheriff's Office FOP to update staffing policies. Item five, Allegheny County Detention Center Medical Services Renewal. This will award the renewal to Well Path LLC from Nashville, Tennessee, for the next fiscal year in the amount of $1,402,080.59. And that represents an approximately 4% increase to that contract. Item six is a bid award for unleaded gasoline, awarded to Southern States Co-op in Cumberland, Maryland in the amount of $1,604,815.89. And that, as you might imagine, is approximately 30% increase from last year. Item seven is a bid award for hauling contracts for solid waste and recycling, awarding to Bergmeier's Hauling out of Altoona for parts A through H as requested. That would be for July 1, '22 through June 30, 2025. Item eight is U.S. Deputy Sheriff's Association grant in the amount of $5,000 to purchase the necessary safety equipment for, and firearms for our two new deputies as you guys approved back in December 2021 with ARPA funds. Item nine is an appointment to the Mental Health Advisory Board, Ola Slider, with a term that will expire June 30, 2025. And finally, Resolution 22-18, which would be an amendment to our rules and regs for county employees. And it will revolve, involve a change to vacancies and how we update our hiring language.
Okay. Are we all good on this gasoline bid? Okay. I'm reading sales tax and we've, we've done that before.
We've worked through this and yes, we're, we're in good shape.
Okay. Very good. Gentlemen, any discussion?
No, sir.
Is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Administrator Bennett?
Just one more thing to add, Commissioners, if I might. As you guys may have seen in the paper today, there was some exciting potential news about a concert series starting in 2023 at Canal Place, and we actually have a letter of support for that and a couple of things to clarify quickly, if you don't mind. So while this is exciting, just wanted to make sure, first of all, that the application has not been submitted for this grant yet. The Allegheny Arts Council is going to submit this application. Tonight, you guys will be, with your approval, we'll be signing a letter to support that application and support some funding for it in the future. Has not happened as of yet, but we've worked closely with the Arts Council, the City of Cumberland, Frostburg State University, and the Arts Entertainment District to try to bring an event, events, series of events to Canal Place. So we just wanted to make sure we put out there that this is something we're working towards getting. It's not, it's not approved as of yet. So with that, if you're okay, I'll read a letter into the record for your signature if you support it.
Sure.
Letter is addressed to the Levitt Foundation and it reads, "Allegheny County Government is pleased to express full support for the Allegheny Arts Council's Levitt AMP Grant Awards Application. This letter serves as Allegheny County Government's commitment to $20,000 annually over three years towards the grant match requirement. One of Allegheny County, Maryland's best assets is our vibrant, thriving arts community. With two successful arts and entertainment districts in historic downtown Cumberland and the westernmost city Frostburg, our region has gained a well-deserved reputation as a regional arts destination. Our region has garnered incredible press and destination awareness through the success of Del Fest, one of the nation's premier bluegrass roots and Americana music festivals. As well, we've been fortunate to reap the benefits of the international and national programming at Frostburg State University, a four-year institution, part of the University of Maryland College System. Being a community that embraces the arts and understands the role that arts play and the success of community development, we also see the potential our region has to explore, grow, and expand our programming and reach. The Levitt AMP Music Series in Cumberland, Maryland, presented by the Allegheny Arts Council, a nonprofit organization dedicated to promoting awareness of and access to the arts with a mission to cultivate the arts, to enrich the quality of life at Allegheny County, Maryland, has the opportunity to re-energize and transform an expansive, yet underutilized 50,000-square-foot festival ground at Canal Place Heritage Park in downtown Cumberland, Maryland. This grant would open the door for community collaboration, create inclusive community entertainment, generate economic impact, and create true sense of placemaking in the core of downtown. While this letter serves as the grantee's cash, cash match need, our intent is to also request that you show favor to the Allegheny Arts Council application for the Levitt AMP Grant Awards. Thank you for consideration and support of this project." That would be signed by all three Commissioners.
Agreed. Without objection.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Attorney Rosas?
We have no report. Thank you, Mr. President.
Very good. Mr. Caprile.
Old Town Days is this coming weekend, on Saturday. The parade starts at 10:00. I was contacted by one of the organizers to be in a dunking booth. He said that people, they had a complaint with the county, could come down and I told him he wasn't going to make any money that way. But either way, regardless, I'll be in the dunking booth at 2:00 PM. So stop down and join us. Thank you.
You can tell it's an election year.
Yeah. Don't do anything.
Alrighty. Commissioner Brody?
I have to work Saturday.
Oh, that's right. Creed's busy.
Yeah. Sir, some good news. This past weekend, I was able to go out to an event that put on by Matt Miller and company at the Fairgrounds. The wing-off is the first time they've been able to have it since, I guess, 2019 with COVID. They're guessing the attendance was somewhere between 2,500 and 3,000. The nice thing with that event, it was all local people. It was very well attended. It was nice to see people come out and get back into some kind of normalcy. But I have to hand it to Matt Miller and company and he, he does that all for the nonprofits. It was, it was very well attended. The workers there was great. Greg, you was there. What was yours? It was spectacular.
Yeah, great.
So I just wanted to give them a big shout out because I was very impressed with the amount of effort and work they put into this.
Great. Okay. Just two things real quick. We had our Tri-County Council meeting last night and, at the lake, and we're moving forward. I don't know if everyone knows, but Tri-County has bought a building, West Side, Cumberland and Lee Street. And so that'll be the first time that Tri-County has ever had a permanent home that they're not renting. So that's, that's my other hat, as chairman of Tri-County this year. We were able to purchase that and totally redo that building. It's right across from the Washington and Lee Apartments. And so we'll be moving in there in the next couple of months. So we'll have a ribbon cutting and make sure everyone's invited. But, you know, it's, it's nice to get that organization back to Cumberland. Right now, they're, they're, they're just renting and, you know, a lot of people are working from home, but they'll have a permanent place with enough, enough offices and we'll get rolling on that. You know, the, the other thing, and I don't usually opine on, on political issues, but, you know, the, the president wants to, to get rid of the gas tax for a couple of months, which is great. I, I agree with it. And, you know, I, I call our, our General Assembly, you know, like the Marie Antoinette General Assembly. It's like, let them eat their cake. You know, it's only in the state of Maryland that, that they're raising the gas tax July 1st. You know, not, not waiving it, not giving a holiday. They're actually raising the gas tax July 1st by 8 cents. And so, you know, it just shows how, how broken our, our General Assembly is. It's, it's totally unconscionable with record inflation and people having trouble getting around to and from work that you, you would actually raise the gas tax at a time like this. So with that, we do have one person signed up to speak tonight, Ms. Nancy Brant, for Quiet, Quiet Peace at Home and Spending.
I want to start off with spending. I want to talk about our county. I've done a lot of research. Our population in this county declined by 7,000 people since the last census. Now, why do they leave? Taxes. There are many reasons why they leave. You don't pay retirement tax. I mean, your retirement tax in Pennsylvania is free of taxes. I'm really concerned about the county because of that, 7,000 people leaving. Our county has 14.7% of persons in poverty. Of our population, 17.9% are seniors and 10.5% retirees, or 11,800 people live in poverty. I, I got this off the internet. Another thing, I want to tell you something that disturbs me. I get these, these literatures in my, in my mail and I'm trying to find someone who would do a fact check on the information on those. I mean, there's talk about holding the line on spending, no new taxes. But I can tell you, we have new taxes. This is the literature that the state puts out, the Department of Assessment and Taxation. Our taxes went up $623,000. Now, our jurisdictions like Frostburg, Lonaconing, it went up 406,000. And those two items alone, the increase in taxes, and a lot of people cannot afford that. The taxes went up $1,029,262,000. We, we chose not to accept the constant yield. Had we accepted the constant yield, there would have been no tax increase. This was in the current paper. I'm sure people see it. All right. So they decided not to keep the constant yield tax, but the literature, going from family to family, says we have held the spending. This is not true. If I could find someone to fact-check it and put it in the newspaper before July 19th, I'd be, I'd be very happy. I can't find too many people because they, they're not aware of what's going on. I did check the last 10 years, no, the last eight years, to find out how many years were held, those years were held to the constant yield tax. That means no additional taxes, property tax I'm talking about, no additional property tax. How many of the last eight years did they hold the spending? You might not be surprised, but I was kind of surprised. Zero times, zero times. It went up eight of those eight years that I checked, and this is off the internet. I'm not an internet guru, but you can check that out for yourself. And I'm just thinking, perhaps we got, we did get a $4.2 million drop in windfall. I mean, I, I just think if, if $20,000, $20 million fell on our lap here, we'd have a place to spend it. But you can't do that in a family home. You have to meet your deadlines, your budget. You cannot spend everything that comes in. You have bills. So with the $42 million we received and the $1 million additional in property tax, we have increased taxes, we have increased income, $5,249,000. So when I get this literature that says we have not increased taxes, I just, I just want to go, I want to destroy it. So if there's anyone that wants to do a fact check and put it in the newspaper before Election Day, July 19th, get in touch with me, please. So I'm concerned about our county, the declining rate of people moving out, over 6,000 people. But at the same time, I am seeing illegal immigrants come into our county. Me, little me, I have seen illegal immigrants coming into our county. And I think, they tell me they're invited, they're invited by our governor, et cetera. I don't know who else. But I'm just disturbed at the amount of money that's spent. And then it, we're called upon to set, to, to pay the taxes and we have to meet the budget. We have to cut back on this and cut back on that and that anyway. I'm just disturbed that the information that goes out to the people is not adequate. So my challenge to you all, you voters, is to check, check out, check it out. See if, see if the person you're voting for voted to keep the constant yield. In other words, not to increase the taxes. So that is my issue number one. My issue number two.
Let me, let me fact-check you there for a minute, if I could. In those eight years, the Commissioners have reduced the tax rate, six of those eight years, and the other two, they've held the tax rate. This current year, the Commissioners also cut the income tax rate. I'll challenge you to find another county in the state that did that, because you won't find one.
I'm talking about property tax.
And I mentioned property tax.
Yeah, property tax? Well, I needed to contact the Bureau of Assessment and Taxes and tell them, you're wrong. You're wrong. Jason says you're wrong. Right here, it tells you.
I said, we cut the tax rate, six of the last eight years. It stayed the same this year. We've been through this at budget time.
I checked on the internet in the last eight years. And you're telling me that you kept the constant yield?
No, I didn't say that.
Okay. There's where I'm at.
Okay.
The constant yield tax. If you have not kept to the constant yield, you have increased property taxes. And if people move out of the county, there, there's many reasons. You're going where they can live more cheaply than Allegheny County. Any other fact-check before we move on?
Well, I could, I could check a lot of facts, to be quite honest.
Nancy, if someone builds a home next to you and we start taxing them, new house, did we increase your taxes on your street? Because we're collecting more money from your street.
You have increased my property, my, my tax, my taxes, if, if the constant yield tax rate has not held. This year, my accessible base went up. The whole county, the accessible base went up. It went up, let me get this straight, three, I think it went up $373,000 of, now that's, that will generate that much additional. I want to get the accessible base. Here it is. It increased from, from 22, or let me, let me get this straight, 2 billion, 264 million, two, up to 2 billion, 302 million. So the accessible base goes up. This, this is so simple, it's hard. If the accessible base goes up, the amount of property value in a county goes up, the state says, you bring the rate down, the accessible base up, bring the rate down to the, to a rate. And they put, they put it in a paper. It's no secret.
We put that in a paper, just to be clear. That's us.
Okay.
So we're advertising what's going to happen.
So this is false.
No, it's completely factual.
All right. This is accurate. This is accurate. You get, you get your accessible base from your, your state assessment and taxation, right?
Yep.
Okay. We're, we're square on that. We're square on that. So as if the accessible base went up, like the value of my house went up, then the, the, I'm having trouble with words here, the constant yield needs to come down so that I am paying the same amount of taxes that I did last year. That's not happening. That's not happening. My assessable base went up, the tax rate went up.
That's why we ran that ad.
I got a double whammy.
That's why we ran the ad. The rate did not change. But that's why we ran the ad, because of the constant yield. And unfortunately, there are costs that change here at the county. You know, we can't continue to pay our workers the same rate we paid them 10 years ago. We, as I just said, can't purchase gasoline for the same cost it was 10 years ago. So our costs continue to escalate as well. I'll challenge you to find another county in the state that's done with taxes what, what Allegheny County has.
I will have to check on that. I don't have that answer.
You, you won't find one that's reduced it. I, I have checked. You won't find one that's reduced it in the last 10 years.
That reduced what?
Reduced the tax rate. Correct. And no one's reduced their income tax rate, except for these three.
Okay, right now, I'm talking about property tax.
I'm just saying.
I, tell me, tell me the question again, so I got it straight, so I can check. I want, I like to fact-check this thing. I don't just accept what somebody says.
So we have cut one, the income tax rate in this current year. Two, you will not find another county in the state that has cut the property tax rate in the last 10 years, as much as Allegheny County has been cut eight times in the last 10 years.
You must be looking at different computer than I'm watching. I went back.
I probably am.
I went back, I went back eight years, back to when Mike was, was the president.
Yeah.
And I could not find.
Ms. Brant, no, no offense, but we could probably debate this all night, to be completely on the interest of time for everyone. We've been through this. We've had a constant yield hearing on this. And the commissioners have adopted a, a budget with tax reductions in it, reduced tax rates in it. The assessment is a function of, of time.
I'm sorry, the assessment's what?
It's a function of time. It's gonna go up. Everything goes up.
Some years, some years, property tax, some years.
Some years it hasn't, but most years it does.
The constant yield has been held several times in the last eight years. So I think we're to stay on pace, but I just wish that, who's ever sent me that literature which stops saying, we don't raise taxes, we kept the budget, on the people, of the, the poor people's back? And I'm just, I'm ready to move. I'm just ready to move. But there'll be illegal immigrants coming in, and maybe, maybe it'll work out. Who knows?
Okay.
So next, how much time I have?
Five minutes, and that ended a while ago.
All right, your next meeting's on the 7th, right? Over to Sheriff's Department?
Hey, you're doing my job for me, Nancy. Yep, our, our next meeting will be over there. Early voting will be in this room.
Put me down. Put me down for talking.
Well, you know, we'll, we'll make a whole evening of it. So our, our next public business meeting will be Thursday, July 7th, 5 o'clock.
Thank you, Commissioners.